Alright everyone, Hare Krishna and welcome again, it's bright and early. So let us start with a quiz, so I wake up all of you if you are a little in a sleepy mood, okay? So I'm going to ask you three questions, so if anybody has attended any of my previous sessions then in case you know the answer already, maybe you can refrain from answering and others can get a chance. So my very first question, let me start off with a simple one. Those who worship Lord Vishnu, what are they called? Very easy, you can raise your electronic hand or the digital hand. Nobody knows, okay, Prahladhananda Prabhu, Hare Krishna please.
Those who worship Lord Krishna were called Vaishnavas.
Wonderful, very nice, good job, let's give him a big round of applause, thank you Prabhu, Anavat Pranams Jai. Okay, now, little difficult, those who worship Krishna, what are they called? Yes, Giva Matha ji.
Karshneyas.
Very good, Karshnas or Karshneyas? It's not a very popular term, we don't call ourselves as Karshna, but that is the proper Sanskrit term, Karshnas or Karshneyas, very good. Now a little bit more difficult, but all of you are intelligent and have a complete answer. So those who worship Shrimati Rada Rani, what are they called? Yes, Arshana Matha ji.
She Gaudyas.
Wonderful, very nice, brilliant, Gaudyas. So those of us who are followers of Iskhn, even those of you who are not, that's okay, but specifically those of us who are followers of Iskhn, definitely you will know that we are not Vaishnavas, but are we Karshnas or are we Gaudyas? Well, Matha ji, I think you said something.
Gaudyas, Gaudyas.
Gaudya, yes, so we don't even identify ourselves primarily as the worshippers of Krishna, we are in fact worshippers of Shrimati Rada Rani and today it is her appearance day. So in one sense for us, Radhaashtrami is far more important and special even more compared to Janmashtrami. So we are Gaudyas, in fact so much so that Sri Loparadha Guru, Sri Labhakti Siddhanta Saraswati Thakur, went to the extent of saying, you know, we are not so much interested in worshipping Krishna. We are worshippers of Shrimati Rada Rani, but because this Krishna has a special relationship with Shrimati Rada Rani, so along with Rada Rani, we worship Krishna. So this is how he used to explain, okay? So Rada Rani has a very special position, so Krishna in Shrimad Bhagavad Gita, chapter number nine, sorry, chapter number four, shloka number nine. So Harsh Pradhan Prabhu, Hare Krishna Prabhu, if you can please unmute yourself and kindly chant this shloka after all of us, let me share the shloka. Yeah, Hare Krishna, Avatara Prabhu, Hare Krishna, please chant Prabhu.
Janma karma chame divyam.
Janma karma chame vidivyam.
Evam yoveti tatvataha.
Evam yoveti tatvataha.
Yaktva deham punarjanma.
Yaktva deham punarjanma.
Naiti mameti so Arjuna.
Naiti mameti so Arjuna.
Thank you, these are translation Prabhu for all of us.
One who knows the transcendental nature of my appearance and activities does not upon leaving the body, takes birth again in this material world but attends my eternal abode, oh Arjuna.
Wonderful, thank you Prabhu. So Krishna here is telling Arjuna, janma karma chame vidyam, oh Partha, oh Arshana, my jhana, my appearance and my karma activities are unlike the appearance, the birth and activities of other souls, the other ordinary jivas. How is it different? So Krishna's appearance is divyam, it is divine, it is transcendental and so are the activities of Krishna. Evam yoveti tatvataha, so anybody who understands, veti means to know, to understand, takvataha, this is the word here, but that is anybody who understands factually as it is. The nature of Krishna's appearance and the nature of activities, yaktva deham, upon leaving his or her body, punarjanma na iti, there is no rebirth for them. So how wonderful is this? That by understanding the divine nature of Krishna's jhana, we don't have to take another jhana. So this same principle can be applied to understanding the appearance and the activities and the glories of Shrimati Rada Rani as well. So just like people in general have many misconceptions towards Krishna's supreme nature, supreme personality, you know, the highest position that Krishna holds. So what are some of the misconceptions that people have about Krishna? One of the common things, especially in South India, many people think Krishna comes from Vishnu. But actually it is the other way around. And similarly, another misconception of Krishna is, many Avataras Vishnu is taking, Krishna is also one of the Avataras. But actually that is not right, Krishna is not an Avatara, he is an Avatari, he is the one who incarnates. And similarly, some people think Krishna is one of the many gods, there are many gods, just now we celebrated recently, Ganesha, Chaturkhi, there is Ganesha, that is Lord Shiva, Durga, Devi, so many are there, Krishna is also one of them. Again, that is also not true, Krishna is the supreme lord himself. So now, just like about Krishna there are misconceptions, my objective in today's session for the remainder of the time what we have, is to perhaps make a humble attempt to try and remove some of the misconceptions about Shrimati Rada Rani. And the very first question that people have in general, especially about Iskhn devotees is that, why do you people add one prefix to Rada and suffix to Rada, if you say Rada it is enough, no? Why Shrimati Rada Rani? Prefix of Shrimati, suffix of Rani, Shrimati Rada Rani. Well, this is how we identify the greatness, this is how we offer the respect to Shrimati Rada Rani what she deserves. Please all of you to please be on mute, maybe consult mute all of you. Because if you on mute, there will be some background noise. Just one second. Okay, there we go, okay? So why do we give the special position to Shrimati Rada Rani? So in preparation to this class, quite some time ago, I was listening to a lecture of Prabhu, and it was a very brief lecture, only about twenty-five minutes, very short lecture, twenty-five minutes. And when believe it a heart, twenty-four out of the twenty-five minutes, Prabhu is going on glorifying Krishna, Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead, from him comes Mahavisnu, Garbo Daksha Visnu, Kuro Daksha Visnu, Krishna is Bhavan, Krishna is the rich man, he is the most famous, he is this, he is that, so many things, yes, Jyotsna ji, you have raised your hand.
Uh, this lot is Ekuma, Matha ji.
Oh, okay, let me use the headphone. Just a second. Is it okay now everybody? Yeah, okay, great. So where was I? Yeah, so twenty-four minutes out of the twenty-five minutes, Prabhu is going on talking about Krishna's greatness, Krishna is this, Krishna is that. To the extent, I began to wonder, by mistake, did I click on Janmashtrami lecture instead of Radashtrami lecture? Because nowhere Prabhu is talking about Rada Rani, he is only going on glorifying Krishna, 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 Krishna. But when I checked, it was still a Radashtrami lecture. And in the last one minute, the twenty-fifth minute, here comes the genius master stroke of Prabhu, where Prabhu is telling, that supreme Lord Krishna, who is the greatest, he is falling at the feet of Shrimati Rada Rani and begging for her mercy, now you imagine how great Rada Rani is. And that Rada Rani is who we worship as Gaudyas and today is her appearance day, we should also fall at her feet and beg for her mercy. I thought, wow, it's only Prabhu who can give a class like this. The twenty-four minutes he glorifies Krishna and in the last one minute he gives that genius stroke. And in this context, let's go back to Kreta Yoga. So in Kreta Yoga, we know the appearance of Lord Srimad Chandra and Ravana, he had abducted Sita, many people gave him good counsel, you know, you are taking fanga with Rama, you are going to, not only you are going to get killed, the whole dynasty is going to get destroyed, you better return Sita. But Ravana, of course, as we know, he was very stubborn, he did not want to return Sita Devi. And he also thought, in order to prepare for this war with Rama, let me gather some alliances, let me gather some troops. So he thought, let me go to Sutala Loka, can somebody tell me who is there in Sutala Loka that he is going to meet there?
Bali Maharaj.
Very good, thank you very much, Bali Maharaj. So he went to Bali Maharaj, Bali Maharaj gave him a very good reception and said, what brings you here? And Ravana said, you know, I am about to face a war with Rama and I want your support. And Bali said, come with me, and Ravana went along with him, and there was this huge, what seemed like a golden mountain. So Ravana said, wow, I am living in Swarna Lanka, you have a whole mountain made of gold? And Bali said, you know what this is, it's not a mountain, this is one year ring of Hiranyakashipo. So he said, imagine if one year ring of Hiranyakashipo is looking like a mountain of gold for you, how big his ear must have been? How big his face must have been? How big his whole being must have been? And that Hiranyakashipo who was so gigantic, so humongous, to kill him, who came, who came to kill Hiranyakashipo? Sarada Matha ji.
Narasimha Deva, Lord Narasimha.
Yes, the one and only Narasimha Deva. And Bali Maharaj explained, that Hiranyakashipo who was so huge, you know, where he hid in this furious battle, battle between himself and Narasimha Deva, in one of the nails of Narasimha Deva. So imagine how big one nail of Narasimha Deva is, and that Narasimha Deva is one of the incarnations of Krishna and the same Krishna has come as Ramachandra and you think I am a fool to come and fight along with you against Rama? He said, go back. So that is the greatness, imagine how Bali Maharaj is conveying to him with whom you are taking fanga, go back. And that supreme Lord Krishna, and what is Prabhu is telling in his lecture, is falling at the feet of Rada Rani and begging for her mercy, then imagine what is the glory of Shrimati Rada Rani? We cannot imagine, we'll try. So now you may think, oh my god, then she is so great, are we even qualified to sit and talk about? No, we are absolutely not qualified, but that doesn't mean that we should not talk about her at all. So based on the mercy of Prabhu, based on the mercy of Rada Rani herself and based on the mercy of Krishna, to the extent they allow us to speak, to the extent that they allow us to hear, to the extent they allow us to absorb the appearance of Rada Rani in our consciousness, we will try our very best. So Rada Rani, not only is she so great, the other misconception about Rada Rani is that, just like many people think that Krishna comes from Vishnu, many people misunderstand that Rada Rani is coming from Lakshmi Devi. But actually that is not so. In fact, it is the other way around. So what is the pramana for this, how do we know this? So once upon a time, about five hundred and thirty-six, thirty-seven years ago, when Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, who was going on his South Indian tour for six long years on foot from Jagannathpuri, the entire South India, going from one punyakshetra to another punyakshetra, he ended up coming to Srirangam. And when he came to Srirangam, of course, we know there is this magnificent temple, Srirangam temple. Ranganatha Perumal is very beautiful lying there and he is very gorgeously worshipped in the Sri Vaishnavan Kampradaya. So the temple priest, the personal priest who touches Ranganatha, who worships Ranganatha at the time, was a great Sri Vaishnavan devotee called Venkatabatta. And this Venkatabatta, being enamored by the charming beauty of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he said, oh Sanyasi, since you have come during the Chaturmasia period, usually Sanyasis, they don't stay anywhere for too long. But he said, because it is Chaturmasia, even right now it is Chaturmasia, second month is going on. He said, why don't you stay at my home for a period of four months during this rainy season and then you move forward with your, you know, yatra? So Chaitanya Mahaprabhu agreed. How many of you have been to Srirangam, can you please raise your hand? Oh, good, when many of you have gone. So you may be aware, behind the main temple, in, on that street, even today if you go, Venkatabatta's home is there. So there is a temple there with Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's deity. So very nice place, so if you haven't been, next time when you go, you can go, it's right behind, if you ask somebody, they will say. So that is where Chaitanya Mahaprabhu stayed, now why am I giving you this narration? So Venkatabatta, being the worshipper of Lakshmi Narayana, constantly he would hear from the lotus mouth of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Rada Krishna, Rada Krishna, Rada Krishna, Rada Krishna. And naturally, Venkatabatta thought, how nice it will be to hear from the mouth of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, at least sometime Lakshmi Narayana instead of Rada Krishna. So one day, he mustered the courage and very humbly he presented to Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, said, you know, my dear Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, since Rada is coming from Lakshmi Devi, why don't you also sometimes, along with Rada Krishna, why don't you also take the name of Lakshmi Narayana? And Chaitanya Mahaprabhu fell silent, for few moments he did not speak. And then Venkatabatta said, did I say something that, you know, caused any disturbance to you? Then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu said, oh my dear Bhatta, I want to let you know, inform you, that as per the scriptures and takvataha, factually, it is not Rada Rani coming from Lakshmi Devi, in fact, crores and crores of Lakshmi Devis who are serving Narayana in Vaikunta are actually coming from Rada Rani. This was shocking for Venkatabatta, who is the star worshipper of Lakshmi Narayana. And not only that, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu took it extra mile where he went on to say, the Lakshmi that you worship is waiting from millenniums and millenniums to gain one entry into Goloka Vrindavana from Vaikunta, where she wants to participate in the Rasalila and till now, she has not gotten an entry. And that Goloka Vrindavana, where Lakshmi Devi is waiting to gain an entry, the queen of that Goloka Vrindavana is Shrimati Rada Rani. And Venkatabatta became very disturbed, it took him quite some time to digest what he heard, it was shaking up his very philosophical foundation, what he believed. And several days, he used to avoid Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he would not talk to him face to face, he will just avoid and do whatever seva he was doing. Then after a few days, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu said, are you angry with me? Venkatabatta said, no, 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 I am not angry with you, but I am just disturbed, it was very unsettling for me, whatever you just said. And Chaitanya Mahaprabhu sat him down and gave him elaborate description about what is Radha Tatwa, then Venkatabatta became very calm and composed. So my dear devotees, not only does Lakshmi Devi not get an entry into the Rasalila of Goloka Vrindavana, there is somebody else of very great personality, who also strived very hard to get an entry into Goloka Vrindavana and that is none other than Vaishnavanam Yata Shambuhu, of all the Vaishnavas, Paramva Vaishnavan is Lord Shiva. So Narutmuni, as he goes everywhere, wherever he wants, no visa, no immigration, no passport, nothing is needed, he is a celestial sage, wherever he can go. So he went to Kailasa and said, Narayana, Narayana, do you know in Bhoma Vrindavana, the supreme lord has taken birth, he is appeared? Shiva said, really, I want to go have darshan. So Lord Shiva wanted to have one glimpse of Krishna who has come to Bhoma Vrindavana and he thought, if I go like this, snake on my head, snake around my neck, you know, scorpions and all my body ashes are smeared. And that too, what type of ashes? Not the kind of ashes you and I can buy from the store or at the temple, that is not the real ash. Anybody knows what is the real ash? Anybody?
Kamshan ki ash.
Yes, well, who said that?
Nisha ma'am.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Nisha ji. So the ash means directly when a dead body is burnt in a crematorium, that what you take ash and smear, that is the real ash and that is the ash Lord Shiva smears. Now, this is in no way disrespectful to Lord Shiva, Lord Shiva is very great, he is in charge of destruction, you know, he is not even one of the demigods, he has his own very special position, like I said, he is the best of the Vaishnavas with utmost respect to Shiva, okay, don't, nobody should take this personally or offence. And that Shiva, when he wanted to come have darshan, he thought, let me go in a Babaji form. So he disguised as much as possible. So he went into Vrindavan, but of course, he was not getting an entry into your Vrindavan. So he went and approached the gopis, you know, I am Babaji, I have come from afar distance, I have told that, you know, this charming bluish boy is born in the palace of Nandababa, I just want to have one darshan, can you arrange? So the gopi said, alright, we will talk to his mother and we will see if we can arrange it for you. So when they went and told Yasoda Mai and when she came and saw, although he was disguised as Babaji, Yasoda Mai could immediately understand it is Lord Shiva and she said, there is no way, I am going to show my tiny baby to him with snakes and all this, you know, smeared with ashes and all that, and she just ran away. But Lord Shiva was adamant, he is like, I've come this far, I am not going back without seeing Krishna, I just want to have one, one glimpse of him. So he sat in front of Yasoda Bhavan, three days fasting. And gopis took some pity, who is this Babaji, three, ten, three days he has not eaten? So they went and pleaded Yasoda Mai, but at least one time you can show, no, one glimpse, what is there? You are not going to give the baby to him, just so. So finally Yasoda Mai conceded and she said, alright, I will show. And she came, took the baby of Krishna, came in front of this Babaji, oh my god, the moment Shiva laid his eyes on Krishna, those curly hairs and bluish complexion, as it is, babies are so charming and cute and imagine Krishna as a baby, the lotus feet, the pinkish hand, everything, he thought, my condition before this was better, now it is worse. Why immediately Yasoda Mai took off baby Krishna? I don't want my baby to see all the snakes and all that. And Shiva is like, now I simply cannot go back. I want to be in this Vrindavan, I want to see the pastimes of this bluish boy, there is no way I can go, my situation now has become worse. So he approached Lalitasaki, Vishakasaki and all that, you know, please do something. I want to be here, I want to witness these pastimes. And they said, oh Babaji, you cannot be a part of this unless you become a gopi. There is entrance only for gopis. And Shiva went to Brahma and said, Brahma, do something, I want to become a gopi and be part of this. And then finally, it is said in the Shastras, it is all takvataha, okay, I am not cooking up any of it. So Lord Shiva, it is said, he went and did tapasya for a really long time, ten thousand years or something like that. And then when he came in the gopi bhava. And then Lalitasaki and Vishakasati said, well, now you can be part of it, but not directly in Rasalila, you can be guarding this kshetra of Vrindavana and from then and until now, it is Lord Shiva who is the kshetrapala of Vrindavana. So that is why Gobeshwara Mahadev, in the entire world, there is only one place where Lord Shiva is worshipped by, you know, making him wear a dress, a skirt, in the gopi form. Because he came in the gopi bhava, Gobeshwara Mahadev, Chakaleeshwara Mahadev. So this is the greatness of Vrindavana where even Rada, I mean Lakshmi Devi is not getting an entry. Lord Shiva had to do so much tapasya and in spite of that, he has only come to the level of kshetrapala. And the queen of that Vrindavana is Shrimati Rada Rani. So first thing we said, why we call her Shrimati Rada Rani, why so much respect? Second thing we said, it is not Lakshmi Devi who is the source of Rada Rani, it is the other way around. And not only is Rada Rani the source of Lakshmi Devi, but even all the sixteen thousand one hundred and eight queens of Dwarka, they are also expansions of Shrimati Rada Rani. So just like the male expansions come from Krishna, the female expansions come from Shrimati Rada Rani. And the next, another big apavada misconception people have is, why you people worship Rada Krishna, are they even married? You worship Sita Rama good, you worship Lakshmi Narayana good, what is this, why girlfriend, boyfriend, why you can help, they are not even married? And not only they are married, but Rada Rani is married to somebody else. And you are worshipping her with, you know, Krishna. So there is this very mundane perspective with which people misunderstand, gross misunderstanding of the relationship between Rada and Krishna. So let us dispel this misconception also. First of all, who is Rada Rani? So Krishna has three energies, three types of energies, can somebody tell me what are those three types of energies? I have to keep asking questions because it's early in the morning, I don't want you to go back to sleep. This is the only way I can keep you awake.
External, internal and marginal?
Wonderful, very nice, thank you Jyotsna ji. So external Bhiranga Shakti, internal Antaranga Shakti and marginal, that is Thastha Shakti. So within the Antaranga Shakti, internal energy of Krishna, again, there are three levels, three components. And what are they? Sandini, Samvit and Ladini. I'll repeat that for those of you, I see some of you are seriously taking notes now. So Sandini, Samvit and Ladini. So Sandini is the eternality aspect of Krishna, which is the Sat. And Samvit is the chit potency of Krishna, which is the knowledge part. Sat is Sandini, chit is Samvit and Ladini is the pleasure potency of Krishna, like prahlada, ahlada, ladini means pleasure. So Ladini is the pleasure potency of Krishna, which is the ananda aspect. So Sat, Sandini, chit, Samvik and then ananda is Ladini. So again, even in Ladini, there are again categorizations, but we don't have enough time to get into all the details. So who is Rada Rani, she is the personification of the Ladini Shakti of Krishna. So she is not like she is somebody different. So she is Krishna's own energy. And even within internal energy, she is the pleasure potency of Krishna, the only purpose of her existence is to give pleasure to Krishna. And that is why she is Rada Rani, Rada, Aaradhana worship. Rada Rani, she is the queen of worship, there is nobody who can surpass Rada Rani in worshipping Krishna, giving pleasure to Krishna. She is the best of the servitors of Krishna, but in spite of being the queen of worshipping Krishna, she is the most humble. Although she is the greatest worshipper, she always thinks everybody else is better than her. That is her humility. So even to think that Rada Krishna are two separate beings itself is a misunderstanding. So Rada Rani is the pleasure potency of Krishna, her purpose is to give pleasure to Krishna. And now we say, oh, this Rada Krishna are not even married, is it not immoral? So we should not impose our mundane so-called morality upon the divine couple, Rada Krishna. Who is Rada Rani's husband, anybody knows?
Ayen Matha ji.
Sorry? Who is? Ayen?
Ayen.
No, no. Yes, Prahladhananda Prabhu?
Abhimanyu is the name.
Correct, Abhimanyu, and who is this Abhimanyu, please pay attention, so you understand these things takvataha factually. Abhimanyu is the personification of the shadow reflection of Krishna. Chaya pratibimbha. And in Goloka Vrindavana, none of the gopis are married, Rada Rani is not married in Goloka Vrindavana, the spiritual world. But in Bhoma Vrindavana, when Krishna comes to perform these pastimes, the shadow reflection of Krishna only becomes Abhimanyu, who plays the role of Rada Rani's husband. And this is Krishna's arrangement, why Rada Rani is married in this Bhoma Vrindavana, so that parakya rasa can come. So whatever is the lowest in this material world is the highest in the spiritual rasa. That is parakya madhurya rasa. I have repeatedly mentioned in my classes earlier, there are five primary rasas and seven secondary rasas. The five primary rasas, shanta rasa, davya rasa, sakya rasa, vatsalya rasa, madhurya rasa, the topmost is madhurya rasa. And even in madhurya rasa, the lover and the beloved relationship, again, there are two, swakya and parakya. Swakya means where Krishna is married, like the sixteen thousand one hundred and eight queens of Dwarka. But even above that is parakya rasa. Where Krishna is not married to the gopis and he has this relationship with them. So in order to enable this parakya rasa, the topmost even in madhurya rasa, Krishna arranges that here in Bhoma Vrindavana, Brajalela, Rada Rani is married to. Krishna arranges that here in Bhooma Vrindavana, Brajalela, Rada Rani is married to Abhimanyu. Who is none other than shadow reflection personification of Krishna. So people don't really understand all these things and they claim they are not married, you people are worshipping them, this, that. So this is the topmost. In fact, this aspect, that in Goloka Vrindavana, there is no marriage for the Gopis, only this happens. This my shiksha guru Bhaktipatma Swami Maharaj clarified just last night, when I asked him, give me little clarity on this, so he clarified this. This is Rada Tatwa. Okay, so this is little bit about her marriage. Now coming to her appearance. So there are many different narrations surrounding Rada Rani's appearance. Now we may say, how there can be many different ones, shouldn't there be just one narration? Well, there is no contradiction here, because this is called Kalpa Beda. So what is Kalpa Beda, Kalpa means one day of Brahma. In each day of Brahma, that is twelve hours of Brahma, the twenty-eight Mahayuga. There also in Duapara Yoga, so Krishna comes, it is a scheduled visit. So like this, in every kalpa, every day, when Krishna comes, so Rada Rani also appears. But she doesn't have to appear in the exact same way, although her parents are always Brisha Bhanu Maharaj and Kirtida Sundari. But the way she appears is slightly differing, so that is why there are different narrations. But one of the popular narrations that is there involves where there was a king called Mahabhanu. And this Mahabhanu had five sons. And one of his five sons was Brisha Bhanu, so Brisha Bhanu is the son of Mahabhanu. And this Brisha Bhanu, he was the king of Barsana. And his queen is the glorious Kirtida Sundari Devi. And Rada Rani is eternally appearing as their divine daughter. But even here, there is a twist, in some of the Puranas, it is said. Actually, Vindhya Parvata, the mountain Vindhya was a little envious of Himalaya Parvata. And what was the cause of his envy, he thought, you know, this Himalaya Parvata has such a wonderful daughter. So who is the daughter of Himalaya Parvata? Yeah, Alohitji's wife, Parvati Mathaji, daughter of Himalaya Parvata. So he thought, he has such a glorious daughter, Parvati. And this Parvati Devi is married to Lord Shiva. So Himalaya Parvata has such a wonderful daughter and a great glorious son-in-law. So Vindhya Parvata thought, I want a daughter who is even more glorious than Parvati Devi. And I want a son-in-law who is even more glorious than Shiva. And having this type of intention in the heart, he went and meditated on Lord Brahma for a really long time. Brahma was very pleased and came and asked, what do you want, and then he said this, he is like, oh, how am I going to solve this? He wants a daughter who is better than Parvati, he wants a son-in-law better than Shiva. He said Tatastu, but then he was thinking, how am I going to make this happen? So this is how it is said in one of the Puranas, but Gaudiya Vaishnavas don't talk so much about it. But it is said that Rada Rani was miraculously shifted from the womb of Kirtida to the womb of the wife of Vindhya Parvata. But however, so this is how Rada Rani, she appears as the daughter of Vindhya Parvata. And how come Rada Rani is the source of Parvati also, so that is how she is even more glorious than Parvati. And then, again miraculously, she again manifested within Barsana. And this Kirtida and Brisha Bhanu took on Rada Rani. So this is one of the fascinating stories about Rada Rani's appearance. But one twist here is that Rada Rani came into the hands of Brisha Bhanu and Kirtida, but she shut her eyes. And naturally, the parents were anxious, they were getting concerned, oh my god, this baby, she is so beautiful. But she is not opening her eyes, is she blind or something? So they are not really informed anybody, because out of this concern, what's going on with this baby girl? And then Naradmuni, when he came to have dharshan of Krishna, he knew that somewhere Rada Rani also must have manifested. Wherever Krishna comes, she will also be there. So he was going from, you know, village to village, house to house, where is this baby girl, Rada? And then when he came to Barsana and knocked on the palace doors of Brisha Bhanu Maharaj, then he understand here is Rada Rani. And then Brisha Bhanu expressed his concern, you know, we have this baby girl, but she is not opening her eyes, they are really concerned, she may be blind. Naradmuni said, you please show me, show her to me. So when they took him to the inner chambers and the moment he saw, Naradmuni thought, here is our divine mother, Ramradha, Rada Rani, she has appeared. Now she, he wants to offer obeysances and the father is standing right there. So he said, can you please stay out for a while, I just want to give her some special blessings? So Brisha Bhanu Maharaj and Kirtida stepped out and immediately Naradmuni is offering multiple obeysances. He is doing Dandavak pranams to Rada Rani. And he prayed to Rada Rani, my dear divine mother, I have a wish, I want to see you in the Kaishora stage. Can you show me that young, beautiful, charming girl, that ropa of yours, that form of yours? And immediately Rada Rani showed that, and now Naradmuni went into ecstasy, he is dancing, he is falling at her feet. And outside Brisha Bhanu is thinking, what is going on, this Naradmuni has not come out still, how much blessing is he showering on my daughter? So they came inside Brisha Bhanu and Kirtida and they are seeing Naradmuni is falling at the feet of the baby and praying to her. And then Naradmuni said, oh Brisha Bhanu Maharaj, what is this, you have not organized any feast, any celebration in the birth of your daughter? For the birth of your daughter. So Brisha Bhanu said, you know, that is what we were concerned about her not opening her eyes, that is why we have not arranged in it. So then Naradmuni said, don't worry about it, you go ahead and organize a feast and don't forget to invite Nanda Maharaj. So Naradmuni arranged it nicely, so they organized this whole feast and they invited Nanda Baba and along with Nanda Baharba who came? Usha Mathaji?
Krishna.
Yes, Yasoda Mai Krishna, and the moment Krishna came, this most beautiful, gorgeous, the mother of all the mothers. The divine mother supreme, Shrimati Rada Rani, she opened her eyes for the first time and laid her eyes on Krishna. So this is what was her intention, if I open my eyes, first person I should see is Krishna only, I don't want to see anybody else. So this is how we should also engage our senses, whether it is eyes, ears, nose, touch, tongue, whatever it is, only in the service of Krishna. So like this, we are going to fast forward, we don't have all the time in the world. So this was the first meeting, the so-called first meeting, so Rada Rani opened her eyes, now Rada Rani has grown up a little, she had all her sakis and all that. And Kirtida expressed her desire to Brisha Bhanu saying, you know, Yasoda is such a glorious lady. Yasoda, yasha da, da means to give, yasha means to fail. This Yasoda is the one who gives fail to everybody. So why don't we invite, send a special invitation for this family of Nanda Maharaj, Yasoda Mai and their Krishna? So they can all come and visit us, we will offer them a feast. So Brisha Bhanu Maharaj said, alright. So they sent a special invitation to Yasoda Mai, so one evening Krishna has come after a long day of herding the cows and calves. And Yasoda Mai said, Krishna, tomorrow no going into the forest. Why Maya, why, I should not go to the forest tomorrow? She said, we have received a special invitation, from whom? From Kirtida, we are going to Barsana tomorrow. Krishna said, oh wonderful, I will bring all my friends with me, okay, we will all go, it will be a wonderful feast. She said, the invitation is only for us, not for all your friends, so only we are going. Yes, Krishna said, oh, if you don't allow me to bring my friends, I am not going. Then Yasoda said, okay, then you will not get to see Rada Rani, you know, so we will only go, you be here only, as always, I will pack you lunch, you go to the forest, we will go to Barsana. Krishna said, what is this, it backfires? So now she is telling, don't come only, if I don't go, how will I see Rada Rani, I have to go somehow. So Krishna said, alright, I will go with you. So the decision was Nanda Baba, Yasoda, Rohini, Balarama, Krishna. And Krishna's favorite pet parrot, anybody knows what is the name of Krishna's pet parrot? Vichakshana, sorry?
I thought Sukha.
Oh Sukha, okay, Sukha is Rada Rani's favorite parrot. So Krishna's favorite parrot is Vichakshana. So they said, these many people are going to go the next day. Madhumangan somehow got to know now, Krishna has so many friends, but this Madhu is quite a character. He is a Brahmana boy, he is a little on the heavier side, he loves laddus like anything. So he thought, special invitation, Krishna is going, how can I miss this? So he went and made a deal with Yasoda Mai, you need one Brahmana to go with you, how you people can go leaving me? You know, I am the Brahmana, I am coming with you, I will chant some mantras, this, that, you know, so you have to take with me, no other boys, okay, you leave, but I am coming. So Yasoda Mai thought, okay, one other boy, no problem, we will take, so this is how Madhumangan also joined the party. So the next morning, everybody went, there is a very elaborate description of this in Ananda Vrindavana Champuk. So they all went to grand reception, right before they ensured Barsana also, you know, just last night in our Bhagwatam class, we were talking about. Mango leaves, plant and trees, torana, this, that, flowers, and you know, centered roads, cleaned everything. So grand reception, everybody, they are so wonderful, they were so happy to receive them. So everybody came and while the men were sitting there and talking, Yasoda Mai straight, she went into the kitchen. She was coming after a very long time, but she did not have to ask anybody, where is the kitchen, which way should I go directly, she went. Anybody can tell how she could sense where exactly is the kitchen? Should be easy, easy guess. Anybody, how did she know where is the kitchen?
Maybe with the aroma, man.
Ah, very nice, yes, 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 aroma. Such aroma, divine aroma from the cookie, she exactly went there. And immediately Madhu thought, let me also follow her, you know, let me do some planning, what all have they cooked? So I can plan what to eat more, what to eat less, what I should skip, how many varieties, how many items are there, you know, Brahmana, Bojana, Priya. So Madhu also is tiptoeing along with Yasoda Mai. And the moment Yasoda Mai went to the kitchen, my god, so many varieties. So cooking should be done in such a way that it is enticing for all the senses and the very first sense it should attract is nose. Even by the smell, it should be appetizing. And then the next thing, it should attract the eyes, all the nice colors. And then the texture for the touch also, what should be crispy, should be crispy, what should be soft, should be solid, liquid, semi-solid, everything should be proper. Imagine rasgulla being crispy, will you like it? Imagine papad being soft, will you like it? No, it should be proper texture, proper color, everything proper, then of course for the tongue also, it should be good. Yasoda Mai thought, Kirtida, what is this? So many varieties, Madhumangan was about to faint. So many varieties, you know, items. And Yasoda asked, who prepared so much, what was the need to prepare so many items? And Kirtida told Yasoda Mai, no, 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 this is not the main cooking. Main cooking has happened in another kitchen where I have cooked. Then Yasoda said, and who cooked all this? She said, I told Radhe, because she also wanted to cook, I said, okay, you do something with your sakis and she has prepared these many items. My cooking has happened in another kitchen and Madhu literally faint. And he thought after, after coming back to consciousness, this is the best decision of my life I have ever taken. Madhu is thinking, if I had not come for this, I would have missed on so many items and not even seen these many items. He thought, oh, Bagya, you know, best decision I have taken. Then Yasoda Mai called Rada and asked, Rada, one of the greatest skills a woman can master is cooking. Of course, you are Sarva Gunasampanna, you know, you have all the qualities, all the skills, Rada Rani, you have, Radhe, Radhe, you have. But cooking, look at what you prepare. Then Yasoda Mai, with a big smile on her face tells Rada, you know, you have learned the art of cooking from your mother. Today, you will learn the art of serving from me. So I will teach you how to serve and you should only serve Krishna. The moment she said you should serve Krishna, she almost melted out of shiners. She is like, no, 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 I don't want to serve, you know, I have all the sakis, they will do, Yasoda said, nothing doing, you should only serve. So everybody sat down, so there is Nanda Baba, you know, there is Brisha Bhanu Maharaj, there is Rohini and all, they sat later. Balaram is sitting next to Balaram, Krishna is sitting next to Krishna, Batu, Batu is another name of Madhu, Madhumangan. So he also sat and on the right shoulder, you know, shastras are very specific, where, who is sitting. So on the right shoulder of Krishna, this Vichakshana is also sitting, the parrot. So they put all the leaves and Rada Rani is telling, there is no way I am going to go, Yasoda is telling, no, you have to go and serve. And first time Rada Rani went, she served until Balarama, she ran off, she didn't give, she didn't serve for Krishna. And Madhu is thinking, what is this, they didn't serve me? And then Yasoda said, no, no, please go and serve Krishna and Batu, so like this they serve. And this Batu, Madhu is going on speaking, 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 there is no break for his mouth. And this Madhu is telling, aha, what amazing prasadam. He is saying, that you know, today I have paramananda, I have reached the height of ecstasy, height of happiness. But at the same time, what to do, I am also extremely sad. So Yasoda said, hey, Batu, why? At the same time, you are happy also, you are sad also, what is going on? And Madhumangan is explaining, oh Yasoda Mai, what can I tell you? I am experiencing paramananda because you know, this Radhe, who has cooked this. I think she is Sakshat Lakshmi Devi, there is no, you know, there is, never ever have I tasted anything like this. Then why are you sad? He said, tomorrow I have to come back to Vrindavan and when I eat the same prasadam again, I can never ever be happy like this, that is why I am sad. And immediately Vichakshana started flirting, it's like, you know, I want to say something, I want to say something. Then Yasoda said, Dhvijaraj, you speak. Now Dhvijaraj could mean a bird also, Dhvijaraj means one who is born twice and Brahmana can also mean Dhvijaraj. Again, Madhu started speaking, Yasoda said, Batu, I didn't ask you, I asked Vichakshana to speak. And Vichakshana became very angry, what? This insult to Radhe, this Batu, this talkative word, he is comparing Rada Rani to Lakshmi Devi. Don't you all know that it is actually Rada Rani who is the source of Lakshmi Devi, why are you all not speaking, some philosophical talks are also going on? Anyway, so like this, the whole pastime happened and Yasoda Mai noticed something interesting. For the first time, she saw that her son, this darling of Vrindavan, this bluish boy Krishna. He was relishing the prasadam cooked by Rada even more than that which is cooked by Yasoda. And for a mother, what can be more pleasing when her children are relishing prasadam so much? So, but she was not envious, in fact, she was happy. So after the whole incident happened, she called Kirtida and said, you know, from tomorrow, every day, you please send your daughter to my house. I want her only to cook for Krishna. And Kirtida said, she is a young girl, I don't think it will be proper for me to send her, I don't mind sending, but her coming to your home and cooking. So Yasoda said, no problem, we will make one arrangement, let her not come to my palace. Before my palace, there is Pawan Sarova, so let her come there, I will make all the arrangements. Let her come there and let her cook there and we will shift the items from there. So that is how Rada Rani was so ecstatic, that she will get to cook for Krishna every single day. But even more than, more than Rada Rani, who was more ecstatic, Sharada Mathaji, hearing that she is going to come and cook for Krishna every day.
Our own naughty Krishna is very happy.
Even more than Krishna, somebody is happy that Rada Rani is going to come and cook.
Madhumangan.
Madhumangan, say, if paramananda is going to continue, anyway, she is going to come and cook for Krishna, I will also get to eat. So this is how Rada Rani is the one who personally cooks for Krishna and can you guess? She never ever repeats a recipe. And you cannot find her recipes on YouTube, you should go to Goloka Amli to try those recipes. If you go to YouTube, it is like Rada Rani recipes, no search items will come. And not only she never ever repeats a recipe, at one time, it is that she can manage more than fifty stoves single-handedly. And the way she serves Krishna is unparalleled. So once Prabhupada had made one special type of laddu, which is not called laddu, but laglu. And he gave it to some of his disciples, especially Tamalkrishna Maharaj, he said, you try this, this is called laglu. So Tamalkrishna Maharaj ate that laglu and said, Prabhupada, it is out of this world. And Prabhupada said, you are right, it is out of this world only, it is not from this world. Prabhupada said, this is the recipe of mother Yasoda. And Krishna loves these laglus so much that he will fill all his pockets with laglus as he goes into the forest. So Prabhupada himself was such an amazing cook. So he is glorifying that laglu is the recipe of mother Yasoda. And mother Yasoda is praising Rada Rani for her cooking skills and it is that Rada Rani who cooks for Krishna every single day. And even after her marriage, so there is all this pastime, of course, I told her husband is Abhimanyu, who is Abhimanyu, we talked about. Her mother-in-law is Jatila, sister-in-law is Kutila, very interesting names, I don't think we can come up with any better names for that. In-laws, Jatila, Kutila, so every day she will come to Pawan Sarova, she will cook. And she is such an amazing cook, after Krishna sits for. And she is such an amazing cook, after Krishna sits for eating, then rice will be prepared hot, hot. It is said rice should be always served hot and it will be piping hot, straight from the, you know, cooking pot here and that too, the way she cooks it is that, very fine cloth, the fine rice will be there in that and that will be dipped into the boiling water. And that boiling water also has this special herbs and kampur and so many things. And just when it is cooked, immediately from there shifted to the plate of Krishna. And a very, very amazing, all these green leafy vegetables she cooks, milk preparation she cooks, so many wonderful items. And this Batu there also, Krishna, if you give me from extra ladu, I will give you blessing, I am a Brahmana, you know. And Krishna is like, what blessing you will give, that you should marry Radha Rani, I will bless you like that, pass that ladu here. So like this, so many delightful pastimes goes on, day in and day out in Vrindavana, so the clock is already showing six fifty-seven. So we don't have the time to discuss, but there are so many other things, we can go on and on about the greatness, the glories of this divine mother, Shrimati Radha Rani. So she is not only expert in cooking, she is expert in everything, everything. She is expert in dressing, she is expert in speaking, she is expert in dancing, singing, who taught Krishna how to play the flute, Radha Rani, who taught Krishna how to dance, Radha Rani? Okay, so there is no end to her glories. Okay, so today's session was just a slight glimpse to give you just a sneak peek into the glories of Shrimati Radha Rani. And this Shrimati Radha Rani, once Krishna was about to come and meet her and he got delayed as always. And Lalitasaki is very strict, he said Krishna, no entry for you. And Lalitasaki went and told Radha Rani, you know where this Diwachi, this betrayer, this traitor Krishna was there with Chandravali, your eternal competitor. Don't allow him to enter. And this is how when Lalitasaki stopped Krishna from meeting Radha Rani because he was late. Because he had gone to see Chandravali, that is the time when Krishna came and fell at the feet of Radha Rani begging for her mercy. And even today, that place is there in Vrindavan called Man Mandir, so next time when you go to Vrindavan, go and pray at Man Mandir. So we started this whole session today with that, how Prabhupada, twenty-four minutes he spoke about greatness of Krishna, twenty-fifth minute said, that greatest Krishna falls at the lotus feet of Radha Rani. So today, my dear devotees, is the wonderful opportunity for us, let us also fall at those divine lotus feet of Radha Rani and beg for her costless mercy, just like she serves Krishna. Let us also beg for her mercy that will, may she empower us also to follow in her footsteps and serve Krishna to the best of our ability. So thank you very much for joining early in the morning, wish you all a very happy Radha Ashram again. So I will catch you again in another special session, so we will keep doing sessions like this. So stay tuned in our other online WhatsApp group, I will keep you posted and you can bring others also to the group, so they can also join us for the future sessions. So let's all do a quick Pramadvani, request all of you to kindly unmute yourselves.